Just waiting for that green light and then we'll be ready to go. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 5th, 2012 meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Ms. Bennerott, roll call, please.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. First matter before us this evening is the approval of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda?
So moved.
Moved in second, we approve the form of meeting agenda that's been published to the public. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And next, consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish us to remove an item from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Excuse me, your honor?
Yes.
I'm not a member of the council, but I do have to request that we remove item number eight.
Oh, H. Four H. Do you want to move that?
We have some agreements which are unsigned for that item, and we would like some additional amount of time to get them signed and then to bring them back to the council for review and approval.
All right. With the exception of four H, is there anyone else?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
So moved in second that we adopt the consent agenda with the exclusion of four H. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And then with respect to four H, Manager Neal, how long would you like to lay that over?
It's probably going to be a couple council meetings. We need to have, I think it's eight of them, re-signed by the residents, so we're going to have to track them down and have them re-signed, so.
So should we say December 18th? That's our?
That would be great.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion accordingly?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second that we move the approval of the, or tentative approval of the special assessment agreements involving Richmond Hills Park to the 18th of December 2012 meeting of the council. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. We have no special recognitions or presentations this evening, and we're going to move right into the public hearing portion of the agenda. And the first matter in front of us tonight is the consideration of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for St. Pat's Catholic Church for a December 1, 2012 event, and Chief Long has this matter. And incidentally, if you were here with regard to six B, which is the preliminary plat lot width and lot area variance requests from Mr. Jared Lindquist, that matter is being continued to December 4th, so you won't need to stick around for that one. Okay, chief, thank you.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, I am presenting a report that requests that you approve a temporary intoxicating on-sale liquor license for the Church of St. Patrick's Fall Festival. They will be holding their fall festival December 1st, 2012, from 6:00 p.m. to midnight. They are eligible for the liquor license and have submitted plans to meet the special requirements required under city code. They have had several prior licenses issued with no problems, and they have hired the Edina Police Department to provide security for this event.
All right. Questions for the chief? This is an annual request over the last several years? All right. Thanks, chief. Standby. I'm going to open this matter up for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing from the audience, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second that we close the public hearing with regard to the consideration of this temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for St. Patrick's Catholic Church. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Now, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion in second to issue a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license to St. Patrick's Catholic Church for an event on December 1, 2012 called their Fall Festival Event. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Senator Roca? No. Pardon?
No, I don't think so. I believe we'll vote of the majority of the council members. All right. Let's do that again. All those in favor issuing the license say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And then, actually, this matter with Mr. Lindquist is still on the agenda, so let's entertain a motion there. We need some action to continue this matter to public hearing on December 4th, 2012. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second that we move the public hearing involving a preliminary plat request from Mr. Jared Lindquist at 5945 Concord Avenue to December 4, 2012. Is there anyone? Actually, this is a little bit, Mr. Knudsen.
It will be a public hearing.
It's supposed to be a public hearing. We're going to continue it.
You're continuing it until that date. That's fine.
Yeah.
As a public hearing.
As a public hearing.
Because we're not holding a public hearing.
So we'll take testimony on the 4th.
You're continuing the public hearing and all that.
I just didn't want to inconvenience anybody that was here for that matter, but, all right. So we've got a motion to continue this matter to December 4th, 2012.
And that's by the request from the petitioner, correct?
Correct. All right. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And then we have one other public hearing matter this evening, and that is involving a piece of property at 6500 France Avenue that requires consideration of several different elements under the code.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the proposal is for a comprehensive plan amendment, preliminary rezoning to PUD. Oh, pardon me.
Tucker.
I'm Chris Acker. I'm an assistant planner for the city of Edina. The hearing tonight will be for a comprehensive plan amendment, preliminary rezoning to PUD, and preliminary development plan for property located at 6500 France Avenue. The project consists of two properties, west of France Avenue and south of West 65th Street, as highlighted. There are two existing office buildings at 6500 France and 4005 West 65th Street. Here are photos of the building, 4005 West 65th Street building from the northwest and southwest, view from the northeast and southeast showing the 6500 France building, and then various views of the 6500 France building from the northwest, northeast, southwest, and southeast. The property is owned PUD 1, Planned Office District 1. The comprehensive plan has the property guided for medical use, which allows a maximum height of four stories or 48 feet, and a maximum floor area ratio of 1.0. The request is to tear down two office buildings and build a five-story, 62-foot-tall, 102,478 square-foot medical office building with 7,000 square feet of retail on the main level, which would include a coffee shop. The remainder, 95,000 square feet, would be for medical use with an attached five-level parking ramp west of the building. The request before the city council is a comprehensive plan amendment, the amendment to allow a building height of five stories and 62 feet on the site. The comprehensive plan allows a maximum height of four stories or 48 feet, preliminary rezoning from PUD 1 to PUD Planned Unit Development District, and preliminary development plan. This is a two-step development review process. The first step requires four votes of the city council for a comprehensive plan amendment, preliminary rezoning from PUD 1 to PUD Planned Unit Development, and preliminary development plan. The second step requires three votes of the city council for final rezoning from PUD 1 to PUD, the final development plan, and then an ordinance amendment establishing the PUD. The current five-story proposal eliminates the mechanical equipment on the roof and replaces it with a green roof. Mechanicals are now within the building, with the exception of a chiller that will be located on the upper level of the parking lot. Edward Farr Architects sent Kerry Teague, the Edina Community Development Director, an email late this afternoon indicating that the acoustical study is complete for the project, and the ground-mounted chiller that had been proposed in your packets on the south side did not meet the noise requirements and will be moved to the top level of the ramp where it can meet the noise requirements. This is the previous proposal. This is a six-story, 102,406 square-foot building that was proposed at 88 feet in height that was denied by the city council. They had a first phase of the building that would be four stories, and that's to the right of the screen. That was approximately 62 feet in height, and that was including the mechanicals on top of the building. The new proposed five-story building that's before you this evening is 62 feet in height. Again, it has no mechanicals on the roof, and the chiller that had been proposed on the south side here is now going to be moved to the top level of the ramp. The current five-story proposal eliminates the mechanical roof equipment and replaces it with the green roof. The parking ramp will now be attached to the building, as opposed to the previous request where it was no longer attached to the building. Some differences from the previous request and the current proposal include that the parking ramp will be five lettables instead of four, will now be attached to the building. The current proposal includes a rounded front in the northeast corner of the building. Previously, it was a very hard, sharp corner to the building. The current proposal introduces a green roof with all mechanicals, again, eliminated from the top of the building. Previously, the green roof was only on the podium portions of the building. Here are the north elevations of the building, showing one view with landscaping and the trees, and the lower elevation is the same, it's just eliminating the trees. East and west elevations, again, showing with and without landscaping, and the south elevation along Pointe de France showing with and without the trees. What it does show you is the mechanical equipment or the chiller that was to be located on the south side, and that no longer is the case. It will be on the parking ramp. Primary issue is the proposed comprehensive plan amendment to allow greater height reasonable for the site. Is the proposed rezoning to PUD appropriate for the site? Staff believes that the comprehensive plan amendment for height is appropriate because it is consistent with adjacent building heights. You have Southdale Medical Center across France Avenue at 92 feet. You have 6600 and 6800 France Avenue at approximately 99 feet in height. You have Twin Cities Orthopedic, which is across West 65th Street to the north, ranging from 82 to 85 feet in height. Cornelia Place Apartments, which is directly west of the site, at 79 feet. Fairview Southdale Hospital across France Avenue on the east. East of the building is 124 feet in height. Pointe de France, directly south of the property, is 123 feet in height. The use of podium height with the first two floors closer to the street is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan, and the density does meet the RMD requirements of 1.0 FAR in the comp plan. Staff believes the PUD rezoning is reasonable. The proposed uses do fit the neighborhood. The property is guided regional medical, which allows medical use, and limited retail, similar to the medical uses located north and east of the subject's site. The proposal would be a more efficient use of the site. The building will be pulled to the street, will be an improvement over the site layout required by standard zoning. The plan implements podium height and front door entries facing the street. The plan introduces a pedestrian-friendly walkway along France Avenue and West 65th Street. Parking will be behind the building, as encouraged by the comprehensive plan. The plan includes a green roof and sustainable design. Roadways would support the project. WSB conducted traffic and parking studies, which concluded traffic circulation and proposed proof-of-parking will work for the site. Chuck Rickert is here from WSB for questions concerning traffic, circulation, and parking. A PUD rezoning will ensure that this building will be built on the site with no modifications allowed without review by the city council. The plan would meet the goals of the comprehensive plan, and in conclusion, staff supports the project and recommends approval of both the comprehensive plan amendment for a five-story, 62-foot-tall medical office building with an attached five-level parking ramp, preliminary rezoning, and preliminary final development plan, subject to the following conditions: that the final development plan must generally be consistent with the approved preliminary development plans dated September 10, 2012; a noise study must be done to demonstrate that the proposed mechanical equipment meets all noise regulations. Apparently, the study has been done and completed, but shall be now submitted to the city for review; sustainable design; the design and construction of the entire project must be done with sustainable initiatives as outlined in the applicant's narrative within the Planning Commission staff report that was in your packets; all buildings must be built with sprinkler systems, subject to review and approval of the fire marshal; the mechanical equipment chiller must be relocated to meet the required 20-foot side yard setback or screen, so as not to be visible from all lot lines; and apparently, as of this afternoon, the chiller is now proposed to be located on the top of the ramp. And all of that will be finalized with the final development submission. Compliance with all the conditions outlined in the Director of Engineering's memo dated October 4, 2012, and as part of a developer's agreement, the property owner would be required to participate in appropriate cost sharing signal for improvements at 65th Street and Bradshaw Avenue, and then adoption and compliance with the PUD ordinance for the site. And with that, I will stop and try to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Acker at this point in time? All right. No questions at this point in time for you. We're going to bring your proponents up, and Mr. Michael, I think Mr. Farr.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and members of the city council.
Try to make your presentation in about 10 minutes, if you could. 10 to 15 at the max, okay?
I'd be happy to. My name is Steve Michaels of Mount development. My offices are at 3600 Minnesota Drive, Edina, Minnesota. It is a pleasure to be before you this evening for our newly Edina Medical Plaza. We're here this evening to request your approval of the new project as outlined in the staff report. These plans have been revised based on our comments that we've gathered from the sketch plan review on September 5th, and then the planning commission comments on October 10th. Our development team is here this evening to highlight the application, and I'd like to have Luigi Bernardi, he will speak first on behalf of Aurora Investments, which is his company, and as a building owner, he can answer any long-term ownership questions.
Welcome, Mr. Bernardi.
Good evening, mayor. City council member, my name is Luigi Bernardi. I'm president of Aurora Investments located 5215 Edina Industrial Boulevard. Thank you for your time tonight and your patience over the last several months as we worked in cooperation with you, the planning commission, and city staff in designing the Edina Medical Plaza. This project is very important to our family business. I believe the city of Edina is committed to revitalizing its community, including the corner of 65th and France. You have before you an outstanding project that the city of Edina will be proud of. I stand before you tonight, having grown up in Edina. I feel that you are not only getting a high-quality building, but also are partnering with a developer-owner who does not simply want to get a project approved, built, and sold right away, but rather a developer-owner who will spend more money and time than the average developer to produce a state-of-the-art medical building to hold on to for the long term. Our organization has a 50-year relationship with the city of Edina. It began with my father back in the mid-'60s in developing the Edina Industrial Park in Madison South. In the '70s, we built the York condo, York Plaza Apartments, and more recently, in 2006, we purchased the Centennial Lakes Medical Building. All along, we cooperated thoroughly with the city in building these projects and often gave more than what was requested from us. Tonight, let's keep our relationship going. Please make this magnificent project a reality and approve it by voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bernardi. Mr. Michael?
I would like to highlight a couple of our aspects of the development that we feel will be an asset to the community. I've taken my pen out and cut them in about half to maintain the timeline here. We do feel the existing Regional Medical District will be enhanced by this building. We anticipate 15 to 20 clinics will be in the building providing quality medical services to the residents in our area. Secondly, we believe that the revised building will be harmonious with the adjacent five buildings, both in architecture and in height. The submission package does show the photographic comparison of each of these adjacent buildings. Would like to give you a perspective of the Twin City Orthopedic Building at 87 feet tall compared to our building at 62. The Twin City Orthopedic Building has been considered a very successful building in the area, and architecturally seems to fit in with the adjacent older buildings. What's interesting about this site is we have the opportunity to redevelop not one, but two older parcels into a single project. Last spring, when we made our previous submissions, it was discussed that we should try and acquire the property to the west, and we were able to do that. It is always difficult to align two property owners to sell their land both at the same time, and we've been able to achieve that. We also feel that the new pedestrian initiative of Edina will be enhanced by our 25-foot-wide walkway on France Avenue and then also along 65th Street. We have our Corner Plaza, a little bit greater than 50 feet wide, 40 feet deep. Be a very special corner for sitting. We do have two retailers that have expressed strong interest in providing services and enhancing that corner, so we're very encouraged by the two groups that are considering strongly providing the retail presence there. The building has been worked with the transportation concept of environmentally sensitive areas. We've encouraged numerous forms of transportation to reduce car movements. We have our car rental, smart car preferred parking spaces within the building, and then also the ZAP bike monitoring system, along with special bike locker areas. So we're encouraged by that. Certainly, the green roof has been fun to work with on the roof of the building. Not many have been done in the community, and we're looking forward to this rather large, green roof area. We've been able to also integrate some flowering plants to that, so the taller buildings in the area will be able to enjoy those colorful plants on the roof of the building. Last item we feel is very important is that the comprehensive guide plan talks about gateway buildings in the business districts. We feel the architectural elements of our building will create a very strong distinctive building as people enter the Southdale area. So with your approval this evening, we're ready to start the new project. We're very thankful for the extra time you've put in on the project, and we're here to answer any questions at this time.
Questions at this time for Mr. Michael. Member Swenson?
Just one. On this sheet that was included, the project summary sheet, on the second page of it, I was a little concerned that it was the city council's suggestion that you eliminate the basement level of parking. That's not in my minutes, and so I just have to comment that that wasn't a request or a recommendation from us. I'm not against it either way, but I'd just like to go on the record that that didn't come, at least from the dais that I have notes on.
May I?
Yeah.
Specifically, I recall that when the discussion was with the two-phase building, four to six stories, there was comment that because of the water level in the area that there could be an elimination of the below-ground parking as something that would make the project more cost-effective, because cost-effectiveness apparently was the objective with the six-story building. So that was the context in which it was not a recommendation, rather, it was an attempt to help you make your project more cost-effective.
Okay. So just kind of a quick.
Thank you. I apologize for any.
Well, no, we have minutes that we approve every time, so we tend to read everything kind of with a fine-tooth comb.
Other questions for Mr. Michael at this point in time? Mr. Farr, are you going to?
Thank you.
Okay. You might want to touch a little bit about how the building has changed from the last iteration.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Ed Farr, Edward Farr Architects, 7710 Golden Triangle Drive, Eden Prairie. Pleasure to be with you tonight, and yes, I will provide an abbreviated presentation this evening in the interest of time. Basically, the project is very similar to what you saw at Sketch Plan Review a few months ago. Let me just point out the minor differences between them. Number one, we added a gazebo in the southwest corner of the plan where people, employees, visitors, and even our next-door residents from apartment at Pointe de France can enjoy that on our behalf in our corner. It's around the city pond, south of our property, and that should enjoy an additional outdoor seating enhancement besides the little more urban plaza that we have, of course, at 65th and France Avenue. As Chris pointed out, we are planning on removing our chiller that we have in our proposal right now, so the condition was it's okay if it meets the noise ordinance, so we went about doing an acoustical study, and I'll just let you know that that failed. So we did another acoustical study with it up on the roof, very well screened. I have a short rendering of how that looks briefly. Suffice to say, we will meet code with that new location. All right. I'm going to march through here relatively quick. You've seen the renderings of the entrance already, and this is a tip view to the parking deck, the corner of France and 65th, with our distinctive crown feature that we brought forth again from the design that we received feedback on, the night view that's on the easel. This is the view from, like, northbound France, looking to the west. From the southwest corner, I did not draw on the gazebo in pathway here, but that would be in the foreground of this particular rendering. Notice that I'm ghosting in my renderings the fifth level of the parking structure. We have no intention of building during the initial phase, rather, it will just be a four-level parking structure. This is the view looking eastbound along 65th, as though you're heading to Fairview Southdale Hospital along 65th, rather. The takeaway from this is that our parking deck looks like a three-story building, because, of course, parking decks don't have a roof level. And you can see the companion photograph from the existing condition in the lower-left-hand This is the aerial view, standing in that similar place, and what I'm going to be zooming in on now is in the middle of this rendering where the parking deck meets the office building. You can see our stair tower peeking up there to reach the office building. Here is a zoomed-in view of that with our planned relocated chiller to the top of the parking deck, which will solve our acoustical difficulties we had on grade. We still are providing that enhanced plaza area, and we're working with staff and WSB's design department that's been enhancing. Other intersections around this area, we'll be incorporating that same level of design Chris went through these slides already for you regarding building height. This was the photograph that I had provided before, looking out of the Pointe de France fourth-floor condominium. This was last winter, and the takeaway here is that in the background, there's a tall flagpole, approximately 62 feet tall, that people use as a point of visual reference that's existing on the 6500 building currently. Obviously, the leaves are down now, but you can see that at the fourth-floor Pointe de France level. I'm at about eye level with this flagpole, and so are their existing trees, which act as a visual buffer between the two properties right now. And this rendering, which is the south elevation, looking straight on, it's the same two views above and below. On top, I have the trees shown, and the bottom, that's all stripped away so that you can see the building materials. But note that I added the flag back in the upper-right-hand corner of this rendering, indicating to you that the building itself is at the same height as the flagpole for a point of reference, and you'll recall that the existing tree line at Pointe de France is at that same height. Steve showed this slide before. This is an overlay, scaled overlay of the existing TCO building that you approved across the street, showing that it's higher than our existing proposal, and our lovely flowers. It's always nice to end with flowers. I do have building materials here. If you want to see the bricks, I showed them last time, but they're available for your viewing if you'd like. And the last thing I'd like to bring up is just our erosion control performance. When we start construction, we will, of course, meet all of the stormwater pollution prevention plan requirements set forth by the watershed district, the city, and the state. That includes erosion control fencing, monitoring by those agencies during construction. We will be doing any dewatering that may be necessary, and certainly, we won't have any mud or dirt slide off-site off our property, where we'll be regulated to keep that all onsite and manage that continually during the construction process. Okay? All right. I'll end there, and we're open for questions. Thank you very much.
Yeah, let's go back and cover this chiller issue. I know that when you look at the
I know that when you look at the notes from the Planning Commission meeting, there were a couple of folks, uh, that were concerned from Pointe de France about the chiller location being at, at grade, and apparently, uh, their instincts were correct. I mean, it sounds like you did a, you did a study, a decibel study, and, and found that, uh, it wasn't going to work there, and so now you're suggesting it be moved up under the roof of the parking garage and then be screened, and, and you've got the buil-, you've got the building and the, uh, um, the tower itself as a, uh, insulator from the, from Pointe de France. Is that correct?
You're correct on all points, Mayor. Uh, this view does show that stair tower, which does, in fact, shield, uh, the noise from the chiller. But most importantly, the takeaway is, and I have a map to demonstrate this if you want further detail, we took ambient noise readings, uh, four times during the week, three times on a weekday, morning, noon, evening, and once on a Saturday afternoon, ambient noise levels at the France Avenue, uh, property line, right between Pointe de France and our property, and then where our chiller was proposed on this, uh, location on our shared property line, uh, in from France Avenue, uh, about 150 feet. The decibel reading out there at the Pointe de France curb cut averaged 65 decibels, pretty much regardless of time of day or day of week, and the same decibel reading at our shared property line where the chiller had been proposed was approximately 55 decibels, again, almost regardless of time of day or day of week. Without being an acoustical consultant, I can tell you that decibels aren't additive, and so the noise that comes out of this chiller was, uh, A, far below the 50 decibel requirement at the property line that your code requires, uh, and B, when we extended that to the, to the residence, uh, face of building, uh, was substantially lower than that, and those numbers, when they are compared, the ambient noise to the, uh, noise coming out of a machine, if the delta between them is greater than 10 decibels, you can just say that it's, it it's not a factor, not an acoustical factor whatsoever. So, our chiller noise is greater than 10 decibels quieter than the ambient noise of 65, 55 decibels, therefore, will not have a significant acoustical impact at the property line or beyond. And we have a acoustical report, which will be included in our final development plan application, which will have greater detail.
And, and this is with the chiller location up on the roof of the parking garage?
Correct, correct. At the property line, uh, we failed miserably.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Farr or the proponent at this point? Member Swenson?
Um, did I read that this parking garage will have a cost to park there? Was that in?
Correct. This, this is a paid facility.
So, how do you, how do most retailers, if they're interested in being part of this building, handle that since we have some costs for medical facilities, but is, or is it a retailer that tends to just service people that are in the building?
Uh, I'll, I'll let Steve handle that.
It's more of a curiosity question, to be honest. It's your problem, but, um, but I'm just, you know.
Yeah, member Swenson, the, most ramps have a grace period from 20 minutes to 30 minutes.
Okay.
If you can get in and get your cup of coffee in 30 minutes, you're doing just fine. Uh, but we do anticipate, uh, a lot of Fairview-Southdale Hospital employees parking their ramp would come across and patronize that retailer and then walk to the hospital for their shift. So, it'll be people that are already coming to the building. Should've worked out just fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just was curious.
Member Bennett?
Yes, following up on parking, Mr. Michaels, is it, um, anticipated that there will be any valet parking service offered?
Member Bennett, that's a good idea. We haven't thought about that yet. Uh, I know the University of Minnesota Fairview does that very effectively.
So, does the Piper Building.
And the Piper Building does it all, so that's a very good idea. We'll have to look into that.
That relates to another question, because it does appear to me that you have a rather small waiting area at your main entrance, at your auto, your vehicle drop-off and pick-up entrance, and if you are anticipating something like valet parking, where people might be stacked up, as it were, waiting for vehicles, or even without valet parking, if they're waiting to be picked up, I think that you might end up with some congestion at that entrance. It looked like a fairly narrow, typical hallway, not narrow, narrow, but with two benches facing each other. That's what I noted in the, um, drawings that were attached to the report, and I'm just concerned if you get a wheelchair or two in that entrance, if you have people waiting, I'm wondering if you're going to have adequate room to really serve your, um, visitors.
You made that point, member Bennett, you made that point several months ago, and last week, Mr. Farr has enhanced that area.
Ah.
It's close to 18 feet wide, and, uh, the problem with the drawings that you have before you, the scale is so tiny, it's really hard to get a perspective. The floors are large, uh, the floors are 20,000 square feet, and, uh, we have enhanced that lobby area, based on your comments. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, parking garage, may I can?
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead.
Another parking question, or parking garage question. There appears to be a discrepancy between what was in the minutes that we received in our packet and comments that Mr. Farr made answers to questions given to the Planning Commission, because the minutes report, uh, Commissioner Shearer asked if louvers would be installed on all sides of the ramp. Mr. Farr responded that the intent is only to have louvers on the south side of the ramp, but that's not what I heard you explain in the-
South and west, yes.
Well, actually, more detailed than that. It sounds like there's going to be partial louvers on some of the other sides as well. So, could you please, uh, clarify?
I'd be happy to, yes. Um, and I'm sorry for any discrepancy that, uh, caused confusion. Um, in general, uh, we are putting 100% louvers on all of our openings facing south and west towards residential districts. Regarding the north and east elevations, uh, specifically the east elevation towards our entrance drop-off is very small. I have a rendering up here on the, uh, TV now, which shows open spandrels facing our court. Um, and then on the north, uh, we have, the majority of the openings have louvers in them, specifically in the central portion, where we're trying to mask the design feature where the ramp slopes up and down. Our intent is to keep the parking deck looking like an office building or a commercial building, as opposed to expressing its sloping ramped floors. So, wherever we have sloping ramped floors, we're masking that with the louver. It's the far west end and the far south end that does not have louvers on the north 65th Street elevation. Sorry for any discrepancy.
I think it was just, uh, they were draft minutes, I think, so-
Okay.
-I would anticipate that they'll be corrected in final form. Um, may I go on to pond capacity?
Go ahead.
Um, so, I note in the plans that the intention is to drain stormwater. There is onsite treatment, but that ultimately, the, the destination of the stormwater will be that pond. Is that where the stormwater from the current buildings is being directed, and do we know what the capacity is and will be, and whether or not there will be any issues created by the direction of that stormwater?
Great questioning, and I'll ask, uh, Mr. Hul, if, if for some reason I stumble over myself in this answer, if you could correct me, but let me, suffice to say that currently, the, both properties drain over the surface of their parking lots, uh, to the pond directly without any treatment.
Okay.
That is to say, when it rains, it flows over land, down the embankment, into the pond.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Um, we have a requirement, and we are providing, um, uh, multiple levels of protection above and beyond that. We're going to have, uh, first of all, less drainage leaving our site, because we have less impervious surface area, but we are treating it for quality and quantity before discharging it to that same location, and we're infiltrating into the existing, uh, into the existing dirt below grade, uh, to do that.
Great, thank you. Um, a couple more questions, if that's all right. Um, Mr. Farr, also, you note, um, in your comments, the ash trees that form the border along, um, West 65th Street, and it sounds like they're mature, and I've also been out on-site. Are they being treated currently to prevent emerald ash borer? Is there a plan? Given the emphasis on them as part of the beauty of the site, what measures are being taken or planned to ensure their survivability?
Um, I'll admit, that's the first time, uh, that subject has been, uh, asked of me. When taking ownership of the property, I'm sure that we would want to assess all of our assets, including these trees, for their health and quality. We've not done, to the best of my knowledge, we've not done a tree analysis to find out if they are diseased or in otherwise compromised condition. We think that they're healthy and, uh, uh, have no reason to believe otherwise, so we're planning on salvaging those trees and, and utilizing them for screening benefit.
There is a, uh, there have been, um, a number of informational meetings held by Minnesota Department of Natural Resources about emerald ash borer, and so, I, I know that there are resources available, but I think it's a concern. Wherever there's especially a line of them, just as there used to be with elms, I think there's, uh, been concern.
I think that's a reasonable thing we'll want to do as soon as we take ownership. Yep.
Another tree question. I note that the screening on the west end of the parking ramp is evergreens. Can you tell me what that full height of, what the full height of those trees is anticipated to be?
For planting or, uh, at maturity?
At maturity, um, understanding that you get, with shorter, you get, you don't necessarily gain with planting larger. Um, so, it's ultimate height in terms of the actual screening of the parking ramp, um, from the apartment building to the east, to the west.
My landscape architect tells me that those will grow to approximately 20 feet tall at maturity, 15 to 20 maybe on average, but up to 20 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I don't know how long it takes to get that tall.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Member Brendel?
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate your answers to my emails and some of those questions we've talked about. I'm curious about, um, tenants. Do you have tenants interested yet? Where, where are you in the process of marketing this property?
Member Brendel, uh, we have a handful of groups that have expressed interest in the property. Most of these business terms take about a year to come together. There's nothing longer than a, uh, medical office building lease to get completed. Uh, we're reluctant to make any representations to those businesses until we know that we have a approved project, but we are very familiar with the Edina market. Both Aurora Investments and my company have done, uh, several buildings in the Edina area, and we're comfortable with the velocity of those clinics that need space in the community.
Um, one of the questions I had that you answered was the leasing rate, and per square foot, it looks like it's just under $37, including CAM?
Yes.
Okay. And how does that compare, uh, with other space in the area? I'm just curious about what, what the company, competition is and how easily this is going to be to rent.
Yeah. The three newer buildings in the area are the 6425, uh, France Avenue, and then the Southdale Medical, uh, head in addition on their northeast corner. We're about 15% higher than those buildings. Most of the clinics that we talked to today are looking for efficiency. They, uh, are willing to pay a little bit of a premium for new, clean, fresh, efficient space. So, all-new construction throughout my life has always been 10% higher than existing, uh, but that is a good lease rate as we enter the market.
All right. Pretty much the other questions that I have had, you have answered. Um, I, I think my last comment, um, really has to do with the green roof, and I so appreciate your embracing that and adding that as an amenity, because I think increasingly in this area, we will have situations where you're going to have a taller building that may be residential, that is adjacent or near another building that is industrial or commercial, such as this. So, giving the opportunity to have something scenic, I've been up in the west and, and I've looked around, and it's pretty utilitarian, so this would be, I, I think, a welcome change, particularly for those residents who are, uh, near that and will see the roof. So, thank you for taking that to heart, and, uh, I look forward to it. I hope this comes to fruition. Um, you've got a lot of Fairview across the street, and they've been kind of salivating over this piece of property for years, but it's been just out of their price range, and so if we can have it developed into something that benefits the entire area, that'd be great. Uh, my heart goes out to Fairview a little bit, just because I know that they would love to be able to have this piece of property, but we have a great proposal in front of us, and that's, that's what our job is, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Farr, could you come back up, please? And I want to look at the, uh, elevation that has some of your pedestrian movements on it. It, it's labeled pedestrian sidewalk at France Avenue, looking south. Just kind of walk, I wanted to walk through that with you, along with the podium height issue.
Could it have been part of our application?
I've got it here in front of me. I don't know if you'd want to put it on the-
Is it, um-
You could, you could use this, and I can work off member Swenson's or member Bennett's.
If, if you could just show that to me for a moment, I'll, I'll find it. All right.
It's, it's got a couple, it's got the honey locust, uh, trees, and then it's got a car going southbound France, and then it's got a decorative sidewalk with the planters.
Yep, be right there. Come to think of it, this, this one. Different one?
This one. Towards the end. I think it's toward the end of the, well, I guess it's not that far back, but it's just not, uh, there's no pagination here in terms of numbering, so.
There you go. We're just getting to the right page. Okay. There you go. Thank you.
I'll start on the, the right-hand side there, where we have the, um, you've got 10 and a half feet of podium height, and I'm just, from a, from a, um, scaling standpoint or a proportionality standpoint, how did you decide how far back to set the podium relative to the, the streetscape to sort of, to, to make sure that you, you had that sense that you weren't walking by a tall building? How do you go about deciding that architecturally?
Uh, two things, uh, to be truthful. Uh, one of them was a diagram very similar to this. We looked at the cross-sectional relationship of the sidewalk, where the people would be in their view up. Um, as you know, looking forward, you have a certain cone of vision naturally, which is about 30 to 35 degrees around your straight-ahead view, uh, left, right, up, down. Uh, so, when, when people have a tendency to, you know, crane their neck up a little bit, they can see up, uh, somewhat, but, but not totally to the sky. Um, the, the 10 and a half feet specifically is also our, uh, I call it a medical module. It's the width of our exam room, which sets the structural gridwork of the building, where we have column placements every three modules, windows every module, and so it was a convenient architectural module to use, and I tested that to find out if that would be adequate, and it turned out that it was. So, I used one of those, uh, what I call medical modules, which is one exam room set back from the building, uh, to, to achieve that. So, I was looking for, uh, what I'll call, you know, substantial, uh, screening of the upper floors, uh, from that pedestrian view, and by the arrow description there, uh, I thought we achieved that goal.
Did, I, I, I believe you did, but I, I was also wondering if you used, uh, 5,000 France, uh, as, as any point of reference, because they've got podium height down there too, and I think as a pedestrian on that sidewalk, you don't really have a sense that there's, you know, taller building, uh, above the two stories of retail or the story and a half, whatever it is of retail, and it seems like you might have accomplished that same effect here, of giving people a sense of walking by a, a building that doesn't have the height that this one has.
Correct. I, I did not use that as a point of reference, but, um, I, I hope our results are similar.
All right. So, how did, how did you go about deciding the width of the decorative sidewalk? Because I think all of that's important too, and I, I like the fact that you went to 10 feet on your proposal here. I think the wider the, the walkway, it's, it's much more appealing to a pedestrian. It makes, it creates a much safer sort of insulation from France Avenue, and you've got a couple of other elements that accomplish that too. You've got, uh, almost six feet of setback from the curb, and then you've got another five feet of tree planter, and then you've got a 10-foot sidewalk and another five-foot gap to the building. So, how did you go about deciding that you wanted that, that walkway to be 10 feet?
Uh, you're correct. It was a combination of, of many of the factors that you talked about already, balancing the proportion of landscape and where that landscape is located to the hard surface area, and the activities that we would anticipate along that 10-foot-wide sidewalk. Uh, when you offer something a little bit too wide, um, then people may get a little lost in there and feel as though something's out of scale and character. A normal five- or six-foot-wide sidewalk clearly would not be wide enough because of people passing on the street, in the sense that if people are walking shoulder to shoulder or want to, uh, sit at, at one of the benches, um, and, uh, and have some level of- or want to sit at one of the benches and have some level of open space. The distance from the curb was also evaluated. We didn't want to have people walking too close to the France Avenue curb, obviously due to the speed limit, cars splashing in puddles, snow storage in the wintertime, et cetera. And we also looked at the landscape area, that five-foot buffer between the paved sidewalk and the building itself is a good dimension, so that people don't feel as though they're walking right along a glass wall or stone wall for just a little human comfort, just like birds on a wire will space themselves naturally, we humans do the same thing. So from an urban standing plan point, that 10 feet worked out very well, especially in relationship to the existing landscape dimensions left and right of that.
All right. So when I look at the site plan, and I look at the planters that run all the way down France Avenue on the east side of the building, I like that insulation sort of effect for pedestrians, and then you've got them, you've got trees planted periodically. I see a distinction between the material that runs between the planter and the street than I do the material that runs from the planter to the next planting bed by the building itself, on the overall site plan, your colored site plan, if you want to find that. So I'm wondering, what are those materials, and do you have those materials with you tonight?
I'm going to, thank you. Let me first point out that in this site plan, the dark rectangles here, those are actually colored with a lot of flowers. The very last slide of my presentation, which I can go to also, was that very special treatment that we're going to be getting from Tangle Town Gardens, seasonal plantings, overstory, things like that. Those are going to be installed specifically within those raised planter areas closest to the curb, those black rectangle areas that you see on that site plan, okay? Those are lifted up from the sidewalk level approximately six inches for protection and to give it some definition of border, okay, versus the landscaping that occurs between the building face and the sidewalk, which is flush at grade condition, or more approachable without that raised trim. Those would be lower in height plantings, whereas the plantings that would be closest to France Avenue in that six-inch raised space that Tangle Town Gardens will provide to us is a much taller planting, and if I can go to that visual at the end real quick, you can see the height, scale, and color character of some of those plantings that would be planted in those raised planter areas along France Avenue.
So in that first five feet from the curb to the planter, it looks like that's grass?
Oh, yes, it is. Specifically, we talked engineering and wanted to make sure we had a sufficient place for snow storage and, you know, splash protection for people on the sidewalk, again, due to the speed limit of France Avenue, that right-hand lane, you don't want to get too close to that.
So are there some species of grass that'll stand up to the winter conditions with all that salt and sand and everything else that gets used?
We're certainly going to have to be on that rigorously, and we plan on doing so. We understand the risks and the hardship that those plantings will go through, and we plan on being all over that.
All right. So then what's that, what looks to me like large paver material, where you have the outdoor dining area and the walkway itself? What is that material?
Colored and patterned concrete.
Colored?
Colored and patterned concrete, that's correct. And we plan on carrying that treatment on the east side along France Avenue, the north side along 65th Street, before it transitions out to a city sidewalk, as you'll see on the colored site plan.
I see that. That kind of wraps in around your visitor drop-off area as well. So that's all the stamped colored concrete?
Extending, here's the site plan, extending east of our main entrance drive along 65th to the corner, this large plaza area.
Yep.
It's about 55 feet from the curb corner to our front door, and about 65 feet in width. There are some internal planter areas within that area to help, you know, enhance the area and offer some sense of place for the seating. And then the colored and stamped concrete continues south towards our south property line.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Those are the questions I have. Member Bennett has a few more she's discovered she had.
Just materials for it, I thought, before you start. You said you brought materials with you, and since any time, and we always need to look at the board so we know what you have on today's date, because if this should get approved, it will be approved based on those materials. Thank you.
Hold it up so you can see it personally, and I'll send it on for the camera. This is our field brick, the majority of the facade is this field brick. It's a beautiful iron spot material that has a lot of texture and shimmer in the sun. The base of our building is a very textural brick, blond, tan in nature. We have a light gray accent brick for window trim work and accent banding to separate those other two materials. And we have a champagne-anodized aluminum window framing trim and metallic trim to trim out the architectural features that goes well with the palette.
What's the canopy material made of?
Most of the metal canopies will be this champagne-anodized, the-
The little-
The crown?
The crown.
Oh, the crown. We're going to try and do a translucent glass there. It'll be backlit, so it'll glow at night, both for this corner as well as the main entrance, which is a lower crown effect.
Okay. Member Swenson? Any further issues there?
Okay. Member Bennett?
Thank you. Mr. Farr, in some previous development applications, the council has been told that medical buildings need 15 feet per story. And I note that in this request, in this proposal, you are asking for five stories and 62 feet, which is not 15 feet per story. How is this building different than those other designs to be able to accommodate similar kinds of tenants in lower ceiling height?
It's a challenge that we have undertaken before as a development team. We do have some challenging floor-to-floor heights, they're called, we have a 12-foot floor-to-floor in this particular building. We'll be very sensitive to the type of structural system that we're looking at. Currently, we're looking at a structural system that combines the beam supports for the floor structure and the floor thickness itself into one structural zone, so that we can compact the structural area, leaving more space for duct work. The second thing is we're introducing our air, our ducts usually take up the most depth above the ceiling. We're introducing that air at three points of each floor, so that we have three air shafts, so that those air ducts can come out smaller than if we just had one or two air shafts, so that we can make our ducts smaller in general. We're offering an eight-foot-six ceiling, not a nine-foot or a nine-foot-six ceiling. We think that's perfectly adequate for this market, but it's not a nine-foot ceiling. So a combination of things, we're able to do that, and we've successfully done that before, actually in two different buildings as a development team.
If I may-
Member Bennett?
A question for Attorney Knudsen. The request is for a comprehensive plan change, and the comprehensive plan defines height west of France Avenue as four stories and 48 feet. So it's actually two comprehensive plan changes that are being requested in the, and in the body of a PUD. I guess several questions. First of all, is it specific to this site? It is not a general comprehensive plan change for all properties west of France Avenue, is that correct?
Yes. You could expand it if you want to.
But that's not the request that's before us, correct? Okay. And then second, follow-up question, should the builder or developer at some point decide that they don't want 12-foot ceilings, they want taller? What procedural steps have to be gone through in order to obtain more height?
They would have to amend the comprehensive plan. I mean, I suppose they could have, under the comprehensive plan, two stor, they have two stories, very large, and, you know, in a practical manner, they'd have to amend the comprehensive plan, and they'd have to come back and amend your PUD ordinance as well.
Okay. And the comp plan amendment, the comprehensive plan amendment is four votes, the PUD amendment would be three votes, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. I do have some traffic questions, traffic-related questions. Will we be hearing from Mr. Rickert?
Mr. Rickert up.
Mr. Rickert, on the diocese evening, we received a injury accident and property damage accident report, which was not part of our packet previously. It shows from October 2007 to November 2012, at the intersection of 65th and France, 20 injury accidents, and in the same period of time and same location, 115 accident property damage crashes. The contact that I've had from the public regarding this project has chiefly been focused on existing traffic difficulties, such as those reported in the document that we're seeing this evening. What is proposed, what is proposed, or what would you recommend to address this situation, given the possibility that over 100,000 square feet of office space may be added to this area?
Mayor members of the council, you know, we did a look at this site, you know, we took existing traffic counts, we took, you know, we did the traffic analysis for this site based on the operations and the lane geometries and the locations of the new accesses and so forth, and we did find that the queuing analysis and so forth, with the way they have their accesses set up, would operate satisfactorily. People can get in and out of this site without, you know, having delays that back up to France Avenue on 65th primarily. That was our biggest concern that we were looking at. Traffic spread out enough and split going different ways enough that it wouldn't impact that. As far as the crashes and preventing the crashes, I'd have to look and see what kind of crashes they are. My guess, without looking at that data, is they're primarily probably France Avenue crashes that kind of aren't related to 65th. You know, they're probably at that intersection, they may be related to traffic backing up from 62, you know, where people are rear-end crashes, things like that. So I'd have to look at that to see exactly what the cause of that is, you know, or those crashes were, you know, to really see if, you know, my, my, my feeling is, based on, you know, the, being out there, that traffic coming in and out of 65th isn't going to be an issue, that right out should not be an issue, you know, but at the intersection, you know, if additional, you know, left turn movements are made, and we found that those left turn queues don't back up past the existing storage and so forth, you know, I think things should be fine, you know, with this additional square footage.
And just as with the proof of parking, is there a plan if the projections don't? I note that there is reference, even in the resolution, to a cost sharing should something need to be instituted. Could you please explain what those, that measure or measures would be?
I guess we'd have to look at if some type of lane geometry changes would need to be done at that intersection. That would really be the extent of what we would be looking at at that intersection, is some lane geometry, maybe some signal timing and phasing improvements, you know, things like that.
Is there sufficient width in that roadway to accomplish any roadway geometry changes?
The addition of turn lanes, there, we'd have to, again, we'd have to look at, our projections show that we don't need any additional lane geometry. You know, there's enough geometry there to handle what we're proposing, what they're proposing and what's there today, you know, so that is the factor. The additional, you know, they have 25 feet of buffer on their side, there is some additional room on the other side also, so, you know, there is some room that if we had to, we could, you know, add a lane if we absolutely needed to. I really don't see that being, you know, something that we're going to be needing or should be doing in the future.
I have a question about this accident report, and that is, this was not provided by WSB, this was provided by the police department. So do we know, and how do we know by looking at this, whether the accident occurred on France or on 65th? Can we know?
We, Councilmember Brendel, we, looking at this, I do not know that without looking up some of these codes that you see in the right-hand column, and I'd have to contact the police department to get what those codes are. As Chuck, Mr. Rickert was saying is that, you know, I also believe that once we've solved the issue at the France and the crosstown, which the county, Hennepin County actually has a layout where they're using the same width of bridge, but just reshuffling the lanes and designating different phases for the different lanes, is that that'll take care of the congestion problem at that intersection. We have that in our capital plan in a couple of years to accommodate that improvement there. So I believe once they do that, it's going to then relieve congestion at 65th and France, because right now it backs up almost to 66th Street on, in the PM rush hour of people trying to get onto the crosstown going westbound. So once that is taken care of, then I believe that this will take care of a lot of these accidents at 65th also, but it does need more study, and I believe in 2013, we also have the transportation study for the greater Southdale area that we'll be looking at this roadway along the Xerxes and all the other roadways out in that area.
Okay. I just have one final comment that I've been thinking about here, and that is regarding building height. I know the comprehensive plan sets ideal building heights for this corner as four stories and 48 feet, but when you look at the buildings that are currently adjacent to this site, none is shorter than 79 feet, four stories and 79 feet, four stories and eight stories, 124 feet, six stories, 92 feet, seven stories, 99 feet. So this building, inasmuch as it is taller than four stories, it is a very modest height. It's probably going to be the prettiest building in the area, just looking at the building itself, but just building height in this area, I actually find it kind of confusing that the comp plan sets four stories for this corner, but yet nothing close to this corner is four stories. It's all more than four stories, or if it is four stories, it's much greater than 48 feet. So for me, the height of this building and the five stories are not a concern for me at all. I would support them.
I had a question for Mr. Knudsen. You know, when I look at the draft of the PUD ordinance-
The findings, the resolution?
No, it's actually way at the end of, it's A102. And I think about some of the things that we might want to do as a conditioner, impose as conditions involving traffic. Because of, back at, it's actually page nine of the Planning Commission staff report, talks about should signal improvements be deemed necessary at 65th Street and France Avenue, the property owner be required to participate in appropriate cost sharing for signal improvements? And then there's also a comment up above that, where we're in the parking and traffic subsection that deals with proof of parking, in the event they don't have enough parking over time. So if the council should determine to put these conditions, attach these conditions to a resolution or the PUD ordinance, is it best to do that at a preliminary level, or should we wait till the final hearing, assuming- Or should we wait till the final hearing, assuming, this is an assumption, of course, because we haven't finished the public hearing yet, but what's the best time to impose conditions the council would deem appropriate?
You can do it either, either time, but my own judgment is it's better to impose them earlier than later, so you give the developer.
So the developer knows what they're facing when they come back, if they are allowed to come back for final.
That's correct.
They know they're prepared to do that, deal with it.
That's correct.
All right. Okay. Other questions for staff at this point in time? It always will open this up. Member Bennett?
Yes, just one last question, and it's another record question. Ms. Ocker, Director Teague before the planning commission said, was commenting on the history. Obviously, parties were quite familiar to each other, although we've seen Mr. Michaels and Mr. Farr less often than the planning commission. But Mr. Teague commented that there had been at least a couple of sketch plans and three designs. And it's my recollection, there was only one sketch plan that came forward for review this fall. And, and then also that three development proposals, but only two of them have come forward to the council. Am I correct?
You're correct, that the two just came in front of the council. That's correct.
So, yes, so again, the council has seen two development requests and one sketch plan.
Correct.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this point in time or for the proponent? All right, I'm going to open this matter up for a public hearing, and we welcome anyone who's interested to come forward and make inquiry or comment. As, as Bennerott informed you at the beginning of the meeting, you'll have three minutes. The timers work well. You'll have 30 seconds when the yellow light comes on. The side microphones work best unless you have an overhead, and we can put you up in the middle with a handheld microphone. So if you want to come forward, please come forward and express your concerns or issues or questions to the council. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Stacy Gallup. I'm here on behalf of the owners of the 6500 France building. I've been before you before. And what I want to reiterate is, our use of the property is no longer consistent with the city's plans, and it's not consistent with the look of the neighborhood. Mount Development has crafted a plan. It's economically viable for them, and it's attractive enough for my partners to make them willing to sell. But I, you know, I just want to make you aware, if it does not go through, the law firm will remain in the spot, and then we're stuck with this building on this corner. It doesn't look great. It doesn't serve the neighborhood. It doesn't serve the neighbors. It's working for us as a, as a law firm. We've been there 20 years, and it's probably time for us to relocate elsewhere. And Mr. Michael has taken time to show my partners other space within Edina, and I know they've met numerous times, and they've been really interested in what he's had to show them. Mount Development has been flexible in listening to your concerns and the concerns of our neighbors, and I'm just hoping that you will be flexible enough with the decisions that you make tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Gallup. Before you depart, would you give us your business address, please?
It's 6500 France Avenue.
Okay, thank you. And I noticed the timer wasn't working for Ms. Gallup, so it should be a green light on there.
So I can keep going.
All right. Other folks? Either one, yeah, no, you already got a red light there, so we got to fix that. You stay there for, go ahead and stay there. I mean, I'm just, I'm just kind of kidding. I mean, it'll come green in a second. When you start talking, it'll switch.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, city council members. I'm Marilyn Kemi, address 6566 France Avenue South, Unit 1206. I'm a resident of Pointe de France, and I'm president of the Pointe de France Association Board. Mount Development sent all owners at Pointe de France a public hearing notice for the Edina Planning Commission meeting on October 10th and also for this meeting tonight. The notice included the revised site plan that was presented and approved at the planning commission and that you saw tonight. No owners have expressed opposition to the revised plan. And Commissioner Bennett, I want to say, you asked about a number of plans. Mount Development met with the owners several times before they presented anything to the planning commission. So the owners had opportunities to express their opinions before anything happened. I would like to quote, quote a letter that you did receive from Alan and Ruth Ann Lipinski, Unit 1007, the letter they sent to the planning commission and also forwarded to you. And I believe this letter reflects the general opinion of Pointe de France residents. And I quote, "Some of the many things we like about the new building design include maintaining a height of 62 feet, moving the heating units to the basement, a green roof, and the revival of the original dramatic front entry on the corner of France and 65th Street. In our opinion, the developer, architect, and investment company have been responsive to the many concerns raised during the proposed project, taken action to modify their plans to satisfy the many parties involved, and have created an architectural building design that will bring life, vitality, and value to this area of Edina for decades to come." Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Kemi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Peter Postorino. I've been before you as well on a couple of occasions. I'm one of the property owners at 4005 West 65th Street, the property that's being taken for a parking ramp. And a couple of notes that I made. One, there was a concern about accidents. I just passed my 32nd anniversary on my building. I anecdotally will tell you, I don't remember seeing accidents on 65th Street. Many accidents, as was anecdotally mentioned as well, on France Avenue, and I would suggest that that's probably the majority of them. I would echo those feelings, that that's really where the accident problem lies, and not necessarily on 65th, although traffic has increased with the Southdale, Fairview-Southdale's parking ramp, as well as the new exit off of Crosstown. But still, that particular roadway is not an accident creator, at least in my experience. I must echo Ms. Gallup's comments about a hope for this area. And I hope that this council, in its diligence and its working with the developers to create what really seems now to be a very special project, that this group will not miss that opportunity, but will move on a, a plan that really seems to enhance this area greatly for the city of Edina and this particular medical campus. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Postorino. Anyone else wish to come forward? Seeing no one indicating an interest in coming forward to testify, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to be closed the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. All right, so we have, Member Swenson, were you going to say something?
No, you can talk, and then I'll raise my hand.
All right, so.
Didn't mean to interrupt you.
If I understand this potential process correctly, the first step in the process would be to obtain some approvals. And one of them is the, I think the initial one would be the comprehensive plan amendment. That would be peculiar to this particular piece of property only. And that would be to allow a building height of five stories and 62 feet on this site, which is differing from the comprehensive plan, which allows a maximum height of four stories of 48 feet. And all four of us that are present tonight need to approve that comprehensive plan change. And then we did talk a little bit about some conditions that we may wish to impose, but it seems to me that we would want to first deal with this comprehensive plan amendment. Although we could certainly discuss some of these potential conditions in the context of whether we want to move forward with the comprehensive plan amendment at all. So, Member Bennett?
I will move the comprehensive plan change with the full, site-specific, with the understanding that any change in it, per our attorney's statements, would need to come back for a comprehensive plan amendment and a PUD amendment. I believe that the height limitation, both west of France and east of York, actually arose with this body before I was serving. My recollection is that it was in the context of discussions regarding the Weston, and that it was assurance to the community of creating a podium height, as it were, a block-wide podium height between an area that was better served by transit and more subject to greater density and height. And so I think it has a long past. Whether the full length of France Avenue, I know that in the comprehensive plan, so to back up, that was, I believe, in 2005 or 2006, and I came on board in 2007. When we approved the comprehensive plan and sent it to the Met Council in 2008, we kept those limitations, but we did end it at 76th Street on the west side, west of France. And I believe that we have kept it east of York. I don't, because that is, York itself has housing on both sides, almost its full length, more commercial again at the north, but fairly low height housing toward the south. I see the logic of what we did at that time. France Avenue, 76th and South is fairly commercial. It's a lot of offices. The residential is quite a distance and largely multi-unit, fairly high density. Had this area, as it has developed, has housing, Pointe de France, I believe, is older than the apartment building, Cornelia Place. And had we been planning this area 25 years ago with the same strategies that we were using with the comprehensive plan in 2008, I'm not sure we would have located housing in this area, because it does fit with the medical campus. It has the access to the freeway. It is well-served by transit. And so the use that we gave to this area with the comprehensive plan of RMD, putting it in the regional medical district, I think was, again, apt. I think it was logical. I think it made good sense. The density comes from that use. It's greater, of course, than the density now, but it comes with that use. I am distinguishing this parcel, based on its location, from other thinner blocks between France Avenue and the residential housing. And so, again, with the limitation to this parcel for this project, we'll move the comprehensive plan amendment.
I'll second that.
All right, good. So let's just make, make it clear here that based on what Attorney Knutson said, you would move the resolution 2012-147, understanding that inherent in any change in the process would be the need for a further comprehensive plan amendment, guide plan amendment, and an amendment to the PUD if that gets approved tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And you secondly apply to that as well?
Yeah, and I support it for a number of different reasons. One, I think it makes sense. Two, I think it takes two pieces of property and puts a very good use to them, where if they were developed individually, they would not get that kind of use. So I commend the developers for putting together these two pieces of property. I think in ultimately, it makes a better product. So I certainly support what you're doing, the green roof and moving things to the lower level. I agree with Member Brindle, what that does when you have housing next to it that's high and looking down. It makes it much more pleasant. So I certainly can support this comprehensive plan amendment.
Member Brindle? You support the comprehensive plan amendment?
Yes, sir, I do. I stated that earlier, which was a bit premature, I know, but I was anxious. Yes, I do enthusiastically support it.
All right, thank you. And I support it as well. I think this is a terrific use for this piece of property. I commend the owner, Aurora, and the developer for engaging the people in the neighborhood so effectively. I think you could tell from Ms. Kemi's remarks that it made all the difference in the world over time, the effort that you made to keep them informed as to things that might be occurring at either the planning commission or the council level, and also engaging them in a straightforward and transparent manner on what you wanted to accomplish here. The, I think the building will fit in well with the, with the regional medical campus notion. I like in particular the fact that when you went to the planning commission initially, and you tried to do this on the, on the mill of its property alone at 6500, and the planning commission told you that you were trying to put 10 pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag, you went back and talked to Mr. Postorino, and it's remarkable that that worked out, that you were able to assemble those two pieces of property on a conditional sort of basis, and come back with a plan that makes sense for the, for the town, makes sense for the neighborhood, and makes sense to those folks that are living right next door. So I commend you for that as well, and I will be supporting this resolution as well. Now, do we need a roll call on this one? I think we do.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Now, next, we have the second phase of the first phase, is the preliminary rezoning from PUD 1 to, planned unit, planned office district to a PUD planned unit development. And then we also have a preliminary development plan. And those are embodied in Resolution 2012-148. Would someone care to move that matter with any of the conditions we discussed?
Do you want conditions on this one, or do you want?
This is the only other resolution that we will have in front of us relative to this matter, I believe.
Mayor, members of the council, if I could suggest, if you want to add anything, the appropriate place to do would be in Page 2, Section 3, approval. You could add conditions there.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
So we had talked about some, let me find those traffic study proposals. You were the motion maker.
Mm-hmm.
Would you entertain, then, in the approval portion of Section 3, adding in a condition that should signal improvements be deemed necessary at 65th Street and France Avenue, the property owner would be required to participate in appropriate cost sharing for signal improvements?
It's already in the number seven.
It's already in there?
Yeah, it's already in the number seven.
What about the?
Great.
Let me go back here.
There's also a proof of parking agreement.
Proof of parking in there as well?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're in business. All right.
There is one, there is mention, there was, is mentioned in the applicant's statement, and then also statements made to the planning commission about art, public art. And I would like to have that made a condition of approval. I would like the art to be at this site, and I note that.
What would the condition, how would the condition read? What's your general notion?
My general notion is that there's been a promise of art, and I would like to see the art actually delivered. I would like to see art be part of this project.
Kind of a good faith effort on the part of the developer to, or beyond good faith?
I want a condition. That's what I'm asking for.
All right, so.
Again, it's in line with assurances that were made before its approval at the planning commission.
Would you put a, would you put a cost cap on it then, or what would you?
No, I'm not telling them what the art has to be. I'm not specifying the art. I'm just.
You want to make sure that there is public art there?
Of the nature and type that was.
Portrayed in there.
Yes.
Yeah. I just, and I read it in one of the pieces that we had, but I'm just not sure where it was that I read when they talked about.
I think it might be in the applicant's narrative.
That's what I'm thinking too. I'm flipping through that.
Mr. Michael?
Mayor members of the council, we could put some sort of stipulation that will be of similar size and style and uniqueness, as shown on the graphics of the elevations that are in your packet. In fact, you can see it on the night vision on the lower right. It's illuminated. It's kind of a Helix 8. In height, size, width, uniqueness, some sort of statement similar to what's shown on the plans that are part of the approval process. Thank you.
Or number 19, it says, "The entrance traffic circle will have an area for a significant piece of art on the center area."
Of the type and nature shown in their, in their evening rendering, their nighttime rendering?
In their evening rendering, their nighttime rendering. Is that the only place it's shown?
Me—
Yes.
You're—
Well, it's the only time it's in— The piece of art is shown in varying colors as we go through here. Sometimes it's red, here we see it in the night picture, and it's reflected—
I don't think we're—
But I don't think that—
Determining color.
No, we're not determining color, but we're also not determining size or shape—
Nope.
—necessarily.
Nope.
We just want to say that their art would be a centerpiece of that—
How about public art of the—
—of that entrance area.
How about public art of the nature and type shown on the northeast elevation of the project?
The term used in nineteen is significant piece of art, and I'm really comfortable with that term.
Significant piece of art.
I'm, yeah.
There was also somewhere, though, that mentioned the chiller, and I don't think it hit its new location.
No, it's got the—
Can you help me where the—
Twice, twice.
Five, you got to fix five. Condition five.
There's a study that's required as a condition, and then also movement, so both of those—
The study's been done, though, correct?
Right, that's what I'm acknowledging.
So it just needs to be moved to the top of the roof to the—
Change Section 3, number five.
Northwest corner of the entrance and the main building, and that it is screened, correct?
Well, you could just say on five, it says the mechanical equipment/chiller must be relocated to the roof of the parking garage.
But I don't want it to the roof of the parking garage. I like where they put it, because it means that it screens the sound rebound and that it goes north—
I wasn't done explaining, but I think as it's shown in their renderings—
Okay, it's shown in the renderings, I'm fine with that. They've shown that rendering today.
Depicted in rendering, shown on November 5th, 2012.
And then, Member Swenson, you always like to put in a condition about materials.
And the materials that you brought to the meeting tonight are also part of this motion. I'm going to make a note to anyone that watches on television, because on the screen they read darker than they are in actuality, just having watched the screen, so that, but they are those materials sitting on that desk now.
So you build according to the plans and specs provided by the pine department, and also use of the materials presented at the council meeting on November 5th.
Thank you.
We've used, yeah, we've used consistent language. I would like to keep two in, which requires a noise study, because I would like, I know the noise study's been done, so we're, let's see.
I don't think anybody was proposing deleting that.
Yeah, okay.
That's stayed there.
Comfortable with that remaining to demonstrate that it works.
Now, that's my motion, now that we flushed it out jointly, thank you, but I think you still need a second.
I seconded it.
Okay. I missed that, I'm sorry, Member Brindle.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. All right, gentlemen and folks, thanks for working on this so diligently. We ended up, I think, with a very good project for our community and for the developer, for the neighbors. It's a win-win all the way around. Thank you very much. We'll see you for final, I guess, what the next step is. All right, next portion of the agenda is community comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and address the council with regard to a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda this evening? All right, we're going to move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and first matter there is Resolution 2012-149, accepting various donations. We have a motion on that.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion and second on 2012-149, accepting various donations. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. And donations this period are to the Edina Arts Center, Edina Fire Department, Braemar Memorial Fund, and the donors' names will be posted on the website. Next matter in front of us is the proposed issuance of a liquor license to the People's Organics Coffee Bakery Cafe and the Galleria Shopping Center. And Ms. Megan would normally handle this matter, if she's not with us this evening.
Your Honor, this is a—
Manager Neil.
Thank you. We think this is a perfunctory item, but our ordinance requires the council review and approval when there's an ownership change of a business that has an on-sale liquor license, and this is what the situation is. Staff does a review of an ownership change. We recommend the council approve this as presented.
I'll move approval, especially since I'm going there for lunch tomorrow, but I don't drink at lunch.
I'll second, because I like going there.
All right, got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. And now, we are on to correspondence and petitions. Anything other than what we had on the diocese this evening, or what was sent to us in our packets? Manager Neil?
No, the only other, the only one I wanted, just to make sure, is there was a handwritten item that was copied and distributed right before the meeting. It just walked in the door late September.
This one?
Yeah.
Yes.
The one with the really good English?
Yes.
All right. Remember Bennett, were you going to say something about correspondence?
We did have some correspondence earlier today regarding a street reconstruction issue that's going to come in front of us in December, and I just wanted to acknowledge that that issue will be considered at that hearing.
And I don't know if you saw it in your email, but there was an email from Manager Neil to the resident saying he could be addressed at the public hearing that we scheduled.
Yes, I was just clarifying, reiterating it for the record.
Is that the one?
Okay.
Yeah. The appropriate time to handle that is at that public hearing, when anyone who has a stake in the project can hear the petition and comment on it.
Great, thank you.
Good. Erin?
I'd also like to acknowledge that we got two reports and recommendations, one from community health and one from energy and environment in your packet, that were very good.
Good, thank you. Member Swenson, keep it going.
Oh.
Go ahead and tell us what you want to comment about this.
You know, I serve on community action partnership for suburban Hennepin County CAPSH, and we saw a film that I'd like some help with counsel as to where we should show it next. It's a new face of poverty, and it's really working poor. Someone that's maybe lost a higher-paying job and what happens in the suburbs when that, they become recession impoverished. And since one in five children are impoverished with the average age of nine in poverty, it just, I thought it was an excellent piece, so I'm not sure where to start it, if it's human rights and relations, or if it's a retreat coming up, or what you would like, but I'd like a conversation about it. And then I'd like to acknowledge, we did get a letter from Kevin Becker talking about the airport, potential change in the airplane traffic. And I know we've talked about this before, and our ability to impact that as a city. So Manager Neil, can you, or Attorney Knutson, can we talk about that as a general public
We can, and I'm personally familiar with some of the sound, the sound experts at MAC from my previous job, and I know them well and could perhaps either have them comment on that email, or perhaps come out for a visit, too.
Well, one of the questions was why were cities, Bloomington, Eagan, Mendota Heights, Minneapolis, Richfield, mentioned, and why isn't a city like Edina, who's the next contiguous suburb? So I guess the question would be, is it because of the height of the plane and the noise impact that they aren't? And then, two, with our standing as to relating to the MAC and airport noise, what is the best position and way to get that across to the MAC as a city? Those are, I think, primarily the two questions that came out of this letter, and I thought they were good ones.
I'll answer the second one first. The way that you can express your concerns in an official capacity is for, is to attend a MAC meeting, a meeting of the MAC Commission, or to present them with written comments that can be read into the record. They have commission meetings much like this one, except they happen to be behind TSA security, there is that, but they are open public meetings, and so we can attend. I've been to many of them over the years. The other thing, though, that in answering your first question is, their noise concerns have to do with the decibel levels—
Right.
The DNL, decibel noise levels that are plotted, and I haven't, I did not see the story, but I got the same email, and I'll look at them again, but typically they have a threshold at which they begin to care, and I know that in the previous runway alignments, those decibel levels weren't exceeded in Edina.
I was, I had remembered that. My other question kind of relates to how much, say, we have, let's say, over rail traffic, do we have the same limitations with air traffic that we do in being able to control air rail traffic?
I don't know the answer to that for sure, but I would doubt it. I think railroads are, seem like they have more powerful interests than the airlines.
Well, it's private property, for one thing.
Yeah.
I didn't know, because, you know, often when we discuss rail lines, you know, there's, the federal government takes precedent often over what you could do as, in a city and even as a state, so—
The railroads often claim that they were here first, too, and that we developed around them, rather than the other way around.
Back on the MAC issue, I did email, I did forward the email we got from our resident, too, Jeff Hamel, who is the executive director of the MAC, this afternoon, because he sits on that transportation exec committee at the university with me, and asked him to address the issue. Look at the email and correspond with us as to what the next step is for us, to make sure that our interests are protected as a community. So I'll look here to see if he's sent anything back while Member Swenson is finishing her comments.
Well, I think—
I concur that it would be, I think, useful to have a presentation. I've had, I, in the neighborhood that has one of the lines going over it—
Yes.
And I have had neighbors stop me and ask me what's going on—
And so have I, yes.
And looking at the articles on the health impacts. So at least having a presentation with some ability to ask questions and get some answers into the public record, I think would be helpful.
Also, at the beginning of the summer, we had a letter from a woman who had noticed the change in the flight patterns, and was very upset and wanted us to do something about it. And she was kind of the canary in the—
Coal mine.
In the coal mine, as far as really, you know, I think maybe we all had kind of, in the back of our mind, thought, gee, there seemed to be a lot of planes, but she really had done a fairly significant study about it. And I think that's all.
Okay, good. Member Bennett?
Thank you. Well, Sunday, October 28th, the Morningside Neighborhood Association held its 10th meeting. It was formed in November 2003, and about sixty people gathered for a candidate meet and greet for city offices, and about fifty people stayed for a discussion of residential reconstruction. It was a very thoughtful discussion with issues and concerns raised largely by people who are living next to new building, although there were others in, at the meeting who commented, who are in new construction. The steering committee is preparing a summary report of the issues and concerns that will be shared with the neighborhood and the planning commission and city council. And planning commission member, Michael Platter, who is a Morningside resident, also was present for that discussion. And the goal of the steering committee and neighborhood association is to encourage comment from throughout the neighborhood, new residents and those with remodeled or reconstructed homes. So there, when they do send out that summary discussion, they will be inviting more comment, and ultimately, I think, seeking some kind of meeting or at least update, answers to some questions that were raised. And that's it, thank you.
Good, thanks. Member Brindle?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. Recently, I don't know if I'm going to come up with the date here, yes I am, on October 24th, I attended a community health needs assessment hosted by Alina Health, and basically what this is, and these are being held around the city by 501(c)(3)'s that are involved in the health industry, and it's a requirement of the Affordable Care Act. So Fairview has been holding their meetings, and they are probably finished with their process, and Alina is well along in its process. But basically, this group included myself, as well as representatives from Dewtown, Bloomington Public Health, Connecting with Kids, New American Academy, and a variety of other organizations within our city who interface with very, with people on various levels. And basically, what we did was we looked at a list of guiding principles that helped to determine how to reach out to the community and all aspects of the community, engage the community in grassroots solutions related to health and eliminating health disparities. So it was a great discussion. We met for about ninety minutes. We will meet a couple more times, just to kind of drill down through this, and each discussion gets a little bit more specific, but it was a very good discussion. And Alina, we met at the Quello Clinic, which is, it may be the only Alina site in Edina, but it's in the basement of the 73, the Centennial Lakes Medical Building. But it was a good meeting, great discussion. And just a couple of notes that we've gotten from residents, and one on a topic that we just talked about, and that's the Metropolitan Airports Commission. There was a note received a bit ago, and I don't know if we all got it or just me, I have no idea, but it's a gentleman who is a musician and a recording artist, and records concerts and a variety of things. And he lives in Edina, moved here specifically because of where we are, and then realized how loud the airplanes are. And he has equipment that records sounds, and so we've actually traded a couple of emails on this, and his question is, he believes that Edina does not have a person who sits on the board, and why and should we have somebody there who can help to plead our case, I guess, and help us with communication?
We did have someone on the board.
Chip Glazer served on the MAC board for a number of years and lived in Edina, but you're right, I don't think currently we have one.
They're all gubernatorial appointments.
Right. There's the only, the only exception to that is the city of Minneapolis proposes a city representative to the MAC that's then appointed by the governor, but they're all appointed by the governor, and even the cities that host reliever airports have wanted dedicated seats on the MAC Commission for a long time in that legislature. That legislation goes nowhere. So I wouldn't expect a city without an airport that happens to have kind of marginal impacts to be, not probably have a good chance of getting a seat on the MAC.
Okay. And you mentioned earlier, Jim, that you had a contact there who is on the board, and when we have, what was the name of the person you mentioned?
Well, he's the executive director of the MAC. He runs the airport.
Oh, he runs the airport?
Yeah.
Okay. So when we get—
He reports to the board, and so there are some people on the board that we know, too.
Okay. So when we get a question like this, there are people that we can refer to and get answers?
There are.
Okay.
Yeah, so I've made that inquiry of him, and then he'll get back to me.
Okay.
I also know the current chair.
Okay. Great, thank you. The last thing I have is, it has to do with the fire department, and we've gotten a couple of very nice letters of people who have had disasters. One particular one I just heard about recently, and you will be getting a letter from these people, Scott. Near CPC, there was a fire, and Edina and St. Louis Park responded to this fire, and lives were saved in this particular one. So they, they are just thanking the Edina Fire Department and the St. Louis Park Fire Department— Park Fire Department. And I said also, I, I said, both police and fire report to these things, so the right place to send the letter is to Scott Neal, and he will make sure that that, that message gets to everybody, but, um, but just know that, I mean, public safety is so important, and that's what makes this job such a pleasure, 'cause we have, uh, police and fire staff that really take their jobs seriously and do a marvelous job of it. Another aspect of how the fire department is relating to the public is that building inspections now, uh, comes under the fire department, since many of the codes that are in place are there because of safety and public safety relating to fires. And, um, and we had a letter from a resident who had a roofing contractor, and the fire department was able to help out with that, uh, the building department. And, um, we got, um, a verbal, huge verbal compliment from the manager of Southdale Shopping Center on the difference in response, um, to their building project, once the building department, uh, has been reporting to the fire department. That has been, it's, it, the efficiency has been enhanced, and I've heard that thank you more than once from, from Southdale. So, uh, kudos to you for making those tough decisions, because, uh, they are being noticed by the public. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. Um, this noon, we had a meeting over in the, at the League of Minnesota Cities for, for Gears, which is the advisory body to the C Tib, the Counties Transit Improvement Board, and we approved, uh, recommendations for C Tib on a variety of capital and operating projects, LRT and BRT related for 2013. Some interesting, uh, projects there that, that will be requiring some funding, and actually past commitments, but they still have to go through the Gears Board. On the 31st, I had a cup of coffee with the mayor of Hopkins to talk a little bit about the Unite 273 issue and get his perspective on things, and I can tell you more about that later. They're still keeping an open mind over there, um, which was good to hear, and, um, I think our superintendents are, are working back and forth and visiting with each other. I don't know where it'll all go in terms of this detachment issue, but residents from our town have another presentation to make, I think, in front of a, a Hopkins group. They made a presentation with Citizens Financial Advisory Panel a week or so ago, and are making another presentation, you know, about the middle of November. Uh, on the 30th of October, we had the first export cluster pilot program meeting here at City Hall. We had, uh, a representative from the Trade Office, I was there, Bill Newendorf, um, Laurie Severson from the Chamber, two people from the city of Minneapolis that, uh, they're gonna try to help us out from their Economic Development Department. They're doing it, uh, from a big city standpoint, and we're kind of leading the way for the suburbs in terms of best practices on this, um, assisting small business. And then we also had a person from the Carlson School that came as well, so, uh, we, we're gonna be getting going here fairly soon. Uh, and then, uh, on the, about a week before that, on the 22nd, we had the Greater MSP Partner Advisory Meeting, uh, for the entire group out at Braemar, and so that was nice to have them in town as well. On the 23rd of October, I had lunch with a couple folks from, uh, Ferbue Southdale, but, uh, also Elsie Mitchell, who is, uh, the consummate volunteer at the hospital, who doesn't do it anymore, 102.
Oh, wow.
And, uh, and, uh, her vision is suffering quite a bit now, and, uh, she, but nonetheless, she's got a, just a wonderful personality, it was great to have lunch with her. And then, uh, also had a meeting that day on the, um, Minnehaha Creek down at 54th and Minnehaha Boulevard with some of the neighbors down there, and also, uh, a rep from the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. And there's discussion now about little, little pockets of activity we could have in Edina to improve the appearance of the creek and some of the functionality, so down at Utley Park where it just kind of disappears back there, really isn't an asset the way it could be, down at 54th and Minnehaha Boulevard, and then a little bit further on down towards Pamela Park, there's some spots that the Watershed District is interested in beautifying and, and making the creek function better, so they're looking for some neighborhood groups to form, and I think they're gonna form a neighborhood group down in that, uh, Minnehaha Boulevard area. Uh, and then, uh, St. Pat's that same night had this, um, um, session on-
Of human trafficking.
Human trafficking, yeah. And it, I thought it would have a, a global influence, but it actually had a real local, uh, emphasis, and it was interesting to be part of that. Uh, and then, the Film Festival opened and closed last weekend, I mean, they started on the 25th. John Swan from the, uh, Edina Arts Center worked real hard with another team of folks to, uh, put on the Film Festival. I don't know what their final numbers were, but I was there a couple different nights. Saturday night, they had quite a good attendance, and so, uh, I think they're planning on a, uh, an even better event next, next year. Uh, and then, also, um, I think, I don't think we talked about this before, but Nancy Richards, Fred Richards, former mayor's wife, passed away, and they had a beautiful funeral for her, so our condolences to the Richards family, and, and I think Fred has already sent, uh, a thank you note to the city for the beautiful flowers that we sent on her behalf. A funeral at St. Stephen's, it just, I don't know, it must've been 600 people there, it was over, overflowing. And, and then finally, I say congratulations to the Edina High School football team.
Oh, I know.
In the playoffs, beat Robinsdale last week, beat Blake, uh, Blaine, uh, Friday night.
Beat Eden Prairie.
Uh, before they got to the playoffs, yep. And so, to get into playoffs, they did a great job at Minnetonka, Eden Prairie, Wayzata, beat them all at home, they're, or away from home. And now they go down to the Dome, they play in the quarterfinals on Thursday night against Rosemont, 5 o'clock Thursday night, so, if anyone's interested in that. So, congratulations, Edina High School Football.
It's been a 30-year drought of championships at the football stadium, so this is very exciting.
Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just a couple of things. Um, we have a town hall meeting scheduled for next, uh, this, well, this coming Saturday, uh, from 10 to noon at the Senior Center, same format, um, that we've used before. Uh, we have, I wanted to let you know, we have three, uh, city staff that are on the East Coast involved in disaster relief as part of a, a larger, uh, team of Minnesotans that are there, two, uh, fire department guys and, uh, one police officer, and the two, we're not sure where the police officer is, but, uh, the two firefighters are in Queens, uh, helping out with disaster relief there, and, you know, be making their way back here soon. And, uh, finally, uh, probably doesn't need to be said, but, uh, we have elections tomorrow. Um, we've had a, a team of, uh, hard-working election judges, uh, who have already been putting in a lot of time, effort, and, um, energy to bring democracy to, um, this town and many other towns, I think, and, um, they have a very long day tomorrow, and, um, so to the extent, uh, that you can be patient with them, be patient with them, know that, that, uh, they work all day long, um, from early light to late into the night, probably tomorrow night, and, uh, they'll be doing the best they can. Uh, Dev, uh, city clerk, has been holding up well, but, uh, tomorrow is a big day for her, and I know she sent you some information already today about where to find, uh, the best information at the, pretty much all hours, which is a little different than what you've had from previous years, but, um-
In the poll hours, they open at 7:00.
Tomorrow morning, and I just-
Seven to-
Verified this, and they close at 8:00.
Okay.
Seven to 8:00.
All right.
So, I have a question on an email, too, so when you're done?
I am done.
Okay. Um, we, I got notice and talked to Manager Hul that you have put in the yellow centerline tabs going down Wooddale, and there were a couple other things, uh, mentioned in that email that you were looking at or doing, so could you review those, please?
Yep, uh, um, today we, our public works folks helped us out and, and placed the center temporary tabs, um, pavement markings down the center line of Wooddale Avenue. Now, those are just temporary, and so, once they fall off, we're not planning to put them, re, adhere them to the pavement, so the first snow event or any snow events that we have, there's a potential for the plow was to plow them off, so they're just, just there to, to show the drivers where the center of the roadway are, or is, some more of a learning curve. The other item is, that was in that press release or the email, and the letter that went out to the, to the residents along there, is that we're removing the, uh, the route sign markers, uh, just along Wooddale Avenue, and the large bike lane signs. Uh, we've re-reviewed or had our consultant re-review the criteria for that, or, or standards for that, and, uh, we came up with that, we don't need those on the advisory bike lanes along Wooddale, so we're removing those, so, uh, should be a lot of residents that should be happy to get those signs out of their front yards. The wayfinding signs, um, that we have at, like, at 54th Street, those will remain, and there's one of them that we're gonna move up to the corner, to the, uh, stop sign that, that's located there, uh, to get them more closer to the corner of 54th and Wooddale.
Are there bike route and bike lane signs on 54th as well?
There, there is, um, and that's the thing, is that we have not heard on 54th, and I think that's a little bit different roadway since we have parking on both sides, um, so I, you know, so we haven't had the reaction on 54th Street in the advisory bike lanes like we have had on Wooddale, so.
Well, we do have one resident on Wooddale who would like them removed both from Wooddale and 54th.
Now, 54th Street, um, where they have dedicated bike lanes, we need to have those in.
Okay.
Assistant advisory bike lanes, that we could take those out, but on the dedicated bike lanes, we have to have, um, the bike lane signs in those areas.
Okay, so that, that is a federal requirement?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, and that's the difference?
Yep, exactly.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So, are the advisory, the be, the advisory lanes are between Wooddale and France on 54th, and then beyond that is dedicated?
No, the advisory bike lanes on 54th Street are between Minnehaw Boulevard and France Avenue.
Okay.
And between Minnehaw Boulevard and Wooddale are dedicated bike lanes.
All right, thank you. Uh, anything else for anyone? All right. We stand adjourned.